Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, I hear you great, thanks.
Can he see us?
Pursuant to section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located in the board meeting room on the north wall. We will call this workshop to order and roll call please, Mr. Ray.
Gadding.
Present.
Hallman.
Present.
America.
Present.
Pearlman.
Ryan.
Here.
Scanlon.
Snow.
Here.
Williams.
Present.
Six present.
And so everyone is there, Mr. Scanlon did let me know that he would not be able to attend. Mr. Pearlman is joining us via Skype so that he knows he cannot vote on our consent agenda, but he will be participating in the workshop portion of our meeting. But I believe, I'm going to look towards Ms. Neelish Rash in the back. Should we still excuse Mr. Pearlman since he's not physically here? She's nodding yes, so I would accept a motion to excuse the absences of Mr. Scanlon and Mr. Pearlman.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Ms. Ryan to excuse the absences of Mr. Scanlon and Mr. Pearlman. Roll call please.
Gadding.
Aye.
Hallman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Six aye.
Motion passes. We will move on to our consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Gadding and a second, or Mrs. Gadding and a second by Ms. Williams to approve our consent agenda. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Hallman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams. Six aye.
Motion passes. We will move on to our consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Gadding and a second, or Mrs. Gadding and a second by Ms. Williams to approve our consent agenda. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Hallman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Six aye.
Motion passes. I did just want to note if anyone who eventually listens to this or is here today did not notice, part of our consent agenda was approving Mr. Pearlman's resignation from the board since he's being seated on the Omaha City Council tonight, so that does create a vacancy on our board. We will be posting that position tomorrow, so on June 6th, and we will be taking applications through June 13th, and then conducting interviews at our June 19th board meeting for that vacancy. You all also got an email with that information this afternoon, so if you have any questions or feedback on input on how that interview process should look like, please send that to Mr. Snow or myself. All right, we will then move on to item E, which is information items, and our bond program workshop, and the purpose of this workshop is to receive information on the bond program, so I will call on Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, what we're hoping to accomplish is to discuss where we've been and a review again of what happened in 2014, how we came up to the $421 million price tag that was passed two to one by our community, which we're still grateful for, and all the gains that we're seeing from that $421 million proceeds. We also tonight want to discuss where we are today, not only with the current bond issue, but also with other opportunities that are in front of this board, and so we've got quite a bit of material and information that we think will be helpful for the board as we look at existing conditions of our facilities. And then thirdly, and finally, what we really want to do today is also look at where we're going, and provide some recommendations to the board, but also ask for some board input on several different steps that we can take. So it's a lot of information, and in front of each of the board members, you all should have a three-ring binder that's filled with what I think is going to be very helpful as we work through this process, and so with that introduction, I'd like to turn it over to our Jacobs manager, Mark Summer, and ask Mark to kind of walk us through what I hope is a very open dialogue tonight as we present information. Please don't hesitate if there are any questions, I think we're here to try and answer those as best we can. Thank you, Madam President. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Before we get started, we did provide a question form in the first tab of your binder. We have a lot of information, it's not a long presentation, but there's some complexities to it, so if you have some questions or have some notes that you may not need an immediate answer to, please jot it down. We can, we'll provide some Q and A time at the end, of course, to answer them now if we can. We'd also like to try to collect them because then maybe there's some items in there we need to follow up on, so just wanted to make sure everybody knew the form was provided, and then the form is kind of broken down into the different sections. We're going to talk about it again to try to help compartmentalize some of the information. So that's the first thing I wanted to mention. The information in the binder, the presentation is in the binder, it's tab two, so you can follow along hard copy if you'd like. It's the same presentation that's going to be on the overhead screen. There's some additional information that we'll reference kind of inside of the binder as we go through as it relates to the 2014 capital facility plan, the Phase Two component of that, there's a few schedules inside of here, so we'll make sure we're clear on it's tab four. This is the piece of information we're looking at, we want to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing, and rather than building 150-slide presentation, we try to consolidate some of the extra information in here. So that's what the binder is here for, is largely to support some of the information you're getting here in the presentation today. We'll go ahead and get started. Here's the agenda, as Mr. Evans had indicated, we want to provide an update on the 2014 bond program, provide a bit of information on the process as it relates to pre-planning of a bond program. So several board members were here during the 2014 kind of pre-bond effort and the process associated with that, several were not, so we want to make sure that we have a chance to explain the process that goes into a pre-planning effort. Want to relook at the 2014 capital facility plan, in particular that Phase Two element, so we'll talk in details about that. Underneath that, there's really two components, there's the new school sites component and then capital improvement, so we have some details with those specifics. Existing facility conditions assessment, a year about this time, DLR finished up or was working on, a very robust, large facility assessment, we can begin to talk about how that will really support future efforts and future analytics that need to go into, again, when you're looking at pre-bond. Steps, pre-refundum, those are really the items that the board needs to take action on in order to actually submit to the Election Commission to file for a referendum, so we'll talk through some of those. Some of those are recommendations that we make, some of those are statute-driven that you absolutely have to do, so we'll talk through them. And then as Mr. Evans also mentioned, there's a few schedules in the last section that really look at different timing options, so we're really trying to earmark 45 minutes to an hour for the whole thing. Again, questions, we'll make sure we answer them to the fullest ability. If we need to follow up, we'll definitely do that, but we want to be conscious of everyone's time. The first thing I wanted to make sure, I know there was a big effort as part of and before the 2014 bond program to really come up with a strategic plan. These are really the items inside of your strategic plan that plug into bond program, about providing safe and healthy environments, engaging the students, the transparency and the two-way communication, so when I went back and kind of looked at these, I always liked to benchmark, you know, the things that we're doing today in 2014, do they still align to these exact principles? And they do exceptionally well. All of the work inside of the 2014 program specifically is targeting these kinds of activities and alignment with CBOC and the transparency of information and all the reporting, making sure that we're building safe schools, and really working with the community on multiple levels, whether that's with small businesses or community entities, working to help small businesses, or working with the ACE program to engage students. So just wanted to make sure we had a chance to look at that strategic plan alignment.
As he mentions that, just a couple of points, two and a half years ago, when I was taking the PowerPoint presentation across the community, I did not talk about growth. That wasn't the primary topic. The topics were those topics that Mark just showed. It was safe and secure, it was creating buildings that were out of date with window units, we had 19 schools with window units, we had HVAC systems that were antiquated boilers. The focus really was not, I've had a lot of people ask me that question, and I say, "No, that was not what I ended up talking about" as we took this out to Rotary groups, Chamber groups, Downtown Lions group, whoever it was, all the different groups and the community groups that the school boards met with in their respective districts. It really was more about non-growth issues, although we certainly have been able to diminish some portables through this process, that was not our primary target, so I guess I just wanted to make that clear, and also just to add, since we have an opportunity here in public, one of the other issues was, the things that I would hear is, how do we know this is going to be monitored appropriately? How do we know we can trust $421 million to OPS? And I said at the time that we'd create a monitoring group that was third-party citizens that would help us, which is what the CBOC evolved into, and that's the first time in the history of this district that we've done that, and it's worked quite well. We are on time, we are on budget, and we have a great group of community leaders and community individuals who help keep us on task on a monthly basis, and report out to them with lots of answers to lots of questions. I just wanted to make that as a point, as we think about the future, we've done what we said we were going to do in 2014. Two and a half years ago, I know what I said to 100 different groups, and we're doing what we said.
Yes, sir. Moving into the 2014, this is just a kind of a quick highlight, Mr. Evans had mentioned it, but on time, on budget, we have a lot of helpers making sure that we're mining the store, and again, meeting all the commitments that the district made. Something that you heard us talk a lot about, of course, is the inclusion program. This is just an update on the status of that program, so almost $31 million have been committed, or 13 percent. You remember the target was about 7%, so really feel like this has really changed the marketplace. There's a lot of other entities and organizations really kind of following the same kind of three different kind of protocols and contracting with small businesses, engaging with young people, and working on workforce development, so really set the way construction work is done in the market on a different path, really. A lot of active projects, basically every project is ongoing or has been completed. The one that's remaining is really the Kellum site, that's an infrastructure-only project, but that will be coming online from a selection perspective relatively soon. And then the other question we get a lot about in CBOC, of course, is program contingency usage, how's that going? Is it following trends? Is it being handled in an appropriate way? We're very transparent on where projects are under budget, and there's opportunity to move contingency back into the contingency fund, if you will, and where there's projects that need more dollars to make sure the commitment of scopes get done, we move those dollars out, and of course, we have all the justifications in place, but you can see there, the original budget was this $37.9 million. To date, we're forecasting and committing about $24 million of that. We're at no point in talking about any savings or anything like that, but we do like the trend where it's going. We also like the fact that we're still receiving a lot of competitive bids and a lot of good coverage, that'll continue to maintain a good trajectory for the program contingency. One other quick slide on the current bond program as an overall, put this graphic together, you can see 267 million or close to 270 million of the 421 has been committed to date, so that's in contracts and purchase orders. Again, that's a big metrics for us to measure on the front end, and then following that, you can see this $168 million expenditure. You can see where the graph kind of changes, it gets real vertical, those are large procurement windows, and then when it gets real vertical in the orange, of course, that's typically in the summer months because a lot more scope of work happens, but this is a good trend that we continue to, we want to see that kind of, those graphs move in parallel, if you will. So that's good information. Moving into the pre-planning process, so what we're going to focus on again today is just the process associated, and some of the steps or many of the steps in planning for a bond program. It's really broken into a few of these components here, the stakeholder and community engagement, the steering team, facility assessment, validation, option planning, and ultimately getting to an updated facility plan. So just going to give you a couple of components under each one, just to get an idea. So stakeholder and community engagement, that's really where we host community meetings, not just to present information, but to really get dialogue going to the community, coming and going, trying to identify needs that they might see in the community, making sure we can bring that information back, analyze it in the broader plan, making sure that we're understanding trends that, again, may not just be educational, but maybe there's other things going on socially, we just need to be aware of and account for. The other thing during the stakeholder and kind of early community engagement, and it's something we'd recommend the board look at doing or provide some direction on, is some early polling, and that would give the board an opportunity to really understand where is the community at from a support perspective of the district, where are they at with wanting to engage us? There's layers of that polling you would do, but it would be a good opportunity to just find out baseline, what's our current support around overall feeling of the district? You may not want to get into these monetary components at this point because it's still early in the planning until you've done some of that due diligence, but it's something that I think at the end of this discussion, we'd like a little bit of feedback from the board on what's the sense of direction there, but that's another way to, again, to engage the community. But the focus again is that dialogue back and forth. For those that can't attend these types of meetings, we'd want to build some online surveys, and again, provide other means for them to provide input into the process, collect that information and make sure it matches up with what we're hearing in person and what we're recording. The steering team really is a group, it's not necessarily CBOC, there might be some members on CBOC that would also participate in the steering committee, but they're really leaders in the community, whether that's a community organization, business leaders, there might be an individual from an organization like the Chamber on there, but it's really a group that's kind of a representation of the community. It's the entity that we would work closely with and say, here's what we've heard from the community, here's what the plan might look like, what do you think, steering team? And then answer their questions and kind of continue to build out the detail, and then when it comes to the board, you would know, yes, the steering teams reviewed us, and here's the comments that they've provided us. And then kind of vice versa, as the board, you would provide information back on the pre-planning and say, okay, what does steering team think about this if we gave them the direction of not doing that and doing twice as much of this over there? We'd again go back to that steering team, review that with them, and then ultimately go back to the community, you know, kind of all the way through the process, but that's how that steering team role is, they're kind of in the middle, again, a little bit broader representation of the overall community. The facilities assessment validation, because of the in-depth facility assessment that you have, this part, you wouldn't need a full facility assessment or validation of any sorts, but we'd want to go through and do some random sampling. Some time has passed, maintenance has done some work, the bond program that's currently on, we continue to pick up little pieces of scope, again, where it makes sense to do, so we'd really want to make sure between the current bond program, what works been being done in maintenance and operations, we really know what that net need is or that net evaluation still is. The other important aspect to understand about the facility evaluation component, the DLR work is really infrastructure-focused, you know, it's the boilers and the chillers and the lights and the carpet and those kinds of things, but as part of the overall assessment, we'd want to work with curriculum to talk about, are there any other academic programs that need to be considered because those will have direct impact on space? And Casey, she's with research to talk a little bit about demographics, but we'd want to make sure we fold that in as well, and make sure if we are planning for something, does this account for future, pardon me, future enrollment trends? So the facility assessment validation piece isn't just about the boilers and the chillers, it's really to get a broader program perspective of what are your overall facility needs with multiple perspectives, again, not just kind of the infrastructure piece, so just wanted to make sure we talked a little bit about that. The facilities option planning is really where we would look at, here's all the needs, and there's multitude of ways of solving those, but what you do at one site may have direct impact of the adjacent schools. You may say, what happens if we look at an 800-student elementary school? What is the impact of the adjacent schools around it? And we'd want to work through those options and let you know what that looks like, and you may say, okay, if we do that, what's the impact over here? But really, it's taking all of these needs, if you will, and looking at the different ways of packaging the work together. So in 2014, there was a big effort, you know, in this area to really understand, there's a $1.2 billion overall need, what are our options to try to get this to a viable bond program? And I think there were, I wasn't here for all of it, but multiple plans at 800 and 600 and various versions, and that really happens in that facility option portion where, again, you're looking at kind of plugging and playing different components, if we do this, what's the net result on the dollars and what's the impact programmatically? So that's an important piece of the process, and really, these aren't really sequential necessarily, they're all components, and like I mentioned, we'll do some facility options or you would, and then you go back in the community and say, here's kind of the options that we're looking at, what's the feedback, steering team's input, then kind of go back through that cycle until everyone, you know, what the communities, you know, what they're needing and hearing and are comfortable supporting, the steering teams and align with, and of course, the board is, so that the goal is to get all three of those really on the same page. And then ultimately, it gets you to the updated capital facility plan, or kind of that five-year rolling plan of capital needs where our infrastructure needs are in there, our enrollment needs are in there, curricular, all of those parts and pieces. So in 2014, that's in the binder, you have that. The Phase Two piece is kind of earmarked as kind of a single or multiple sheet, but we'd really want to build that out to a full document with all the project listings, et cetera, to make sure you have a full view of an updated facilities plan. So that's really the overall process on the pre-planning items. Jeremy's going to talk a little bit here about Phase Two, he was really here during that process in 2014.
Okay, so one of the interesting things that happened as a result of the initial facility options planning from three years ago, was when we went to the community, the end result was a need that identified $1.1 billion, and as Mr. Evans started to allude to, as we worked through the process with the committee, with the community, with the board, $1.1 billion was, it wasn't small enough, if you will, for the community to accept. So one of the things that we do in this process is really go to the community, go to the other stakeholders, steering committee, vet out all the options to find out what we feel collectively would be a good target for a bond program. So what I want to do real quick, everyone has a binder, I wanted to highlight just a few notes from the initial facilities capital plan from three years ago. So if you flip to tab number three, and it'll be the first sheet that's titled Phase Two Bond. So as Mr. Evans mentioned, the initial goal for the Phase One bond was about safety, security, and capital improvements. It wasn't about, you know, increasing the capacity in the district, but that was one of the goals that was identified as a part of the Phase Two planning process. So as you look at the Phase Two bond there, you'll notice that there's two sections sort of in that spreadsheet, if you will. One that's titled Capital Improvements and Renovations at Existing Facilities, and then the other portion down there in the gray is Increased Capacity in the High-Growth Areas in the District. So at the time, again, three years ago, these were the numbers that, of the identified $1.1 billion, after we vetted through the community, come up with $421 million for the Phase One bond, we identified a need of, again, at the time, $376 million to take care of some of these items. So this is really, and once you go behind the first initial page, the full initial capital facilities plan is in front of you as well. So again, this single sheet identifies the need that was identified for Phase Two. And again, just looking at the slide, one thing that we're going to focus on in Phase Two is increasing capacity. There's still some schools that have capital improvement needs that were not taken care of in the first phase. So Phase Two, one of the goals is to take care of those. One of the big messages whenever we do, you know, bond planning, referendums, is we want to ensure that whatever the commitment that was made to the taxpayers, to the voters, we want to be sure that we follow through on those. So that's one of the goals, again, as part of the pre-planning process, is that everything that we've identified to be taken care of does get taken care of as well. And this one in particular, it's site acquisition and increasing capacity for the Phase Two portion. Again, at the time of the facilities capital plan, we identified $376 million in need, there's a lot of detail also that we have that encompasses that result. So again, big picture, Phase Two, the big goal was increasing capacity in high-growth areas, and again, taking care of capital improvements where Phase Two did not.
Thank you, Jeremy. So now we're going to move into kind of the underneath, underneath this matrix, there's some detail we want to make sure we talk about, so we really broke it into two components, kind of the new school sites, and then the capital improvement. So the next dozen or so slides really speak to that. I'm just going to really introduce this first one, and then we're going to pass it to Casey, and he's really going to walk through demographics behind the middle school, or sorry, the elementary school need, the middle school need, and the high school need, and then we'll continue on the other side of that conversation with the capital improvements. But just to let everybody know, the sites we're talking about really are these five, these five facilities, two elementary schools, one at Tenth and Pine, one off of Fort Crook Road, you can see here, of course, the Gateway Site.
There's layers of that polling you would do, but it would be a good opportunity to just find out baseline, what's our current support around overall feeling of the district. You may not want to get into these monetary components at this point because it's still early in the planning until you've done some of that due diligence, but it's something that I think at the end of this discussion, we'd like a little bit of feedback from the board on, on what's, what's the sense of direction there. But that's another way to, again, to engage the community. But the focus again is that dialogue back and forth. For those that can't attend these types of meetings, we'd want to build some online surveys and again, provide other means for them to provide input into the process, collect that information and make sure it matches up with what we're hearing in person and what we're recording. The steering team really is a group. It's, it's not necessarily CBOC. There might be some members on CBOC that would also participate in the steering committee, but they're really leaders in the community, whether that's a community organization, business leaders. There might be an individual from an organization like the Chamber on there, but it's really a group that's kind of a representation of the community. It's the, it's the entity that we would work closely with and say, here's what we've heard from the community, here's what the plan might look like. What do you think steering team? And then answer their questions and kind of continue to, to build out the detail. And then when it comes to the board, you would know, yes, the steering teams reviewed us and here's the comments that they've provided us. And then kind of vice versa, as the board, you would provide information back on the pre-planning and say, okay, what does steering team think about this if we gave them the direction of not doing that and doing twice as much of this over there? We'd, we'd again, go back to that steering team, review that with them, and then ultimately go back to the community, you know, kind of all the way through the process. But that's how that steering team role is. They're kind of in the middle, again, a little bit broader representation of the overall community. The facilities assessment validation, because of the, the in-depth facility assessment that you have, this part, you, you wouldn't need a full facility assessment or validation of any sorts, but we'd want to go through and do some random sampling. Some time has passed, maintenance has done some work. The bond program that's currently on, we continue to pick up little pieces of scope, again, where it makes sense to do. So we'd really want to make sure between the current bond program, what works been being done in, in maintenance and operations, we really know what that net need is or that net evaluation still is. The other important aspect to understand about the facility evaluation component, the DLR work is really infrastructure focused. You know, it's, it's the boilers and the chillers and the lights and the carpet and those kinds of things. But as part of the overall assessment, we'd want to work with curriculum to talk about, are there any other academic programs that need to be considered? Because those will have direct impact on space. And Casey here's with research to talk a little bit about demographics, but we'd want to make sure we fold that in as well and make sure if we are planning for something, does this account for future, pardon me, future enrollment trends? So the facility assessment validation piece isn't just about the boilers and the chillers. It's really to get a broader program perspective of what are your overall facility needs with multiple perspectives, again, not just kind of the infrastructure piece. So I just wanted to make sure we talked a little bit about that. The facilities option planning is really where we would look at, here's all, here's all the needs. And there's multitude of ways of solving those. But what you do at one site may have direct impact of, of the adjacent schools. You may say, what happens if we look at an 800 student elementary school? What is the impact of the adjacent schools around it? And we'd want to work through those options and let you know what that looks like. And you may say, okay, if we do that, what's the, what's the impact over here? But really, it's, it's taking all of these needs, if you will, and looking at the different ways of packaging of the work together. So in 2014, there was a big effort, you know, in this, this area to really understand, there's a $1.2 billion overall need. What are our options to try to get this to a viable bond program? And I think there were, I, I wasn't here for all of it, but multiple plans at 800 and 600 and in various versions. And that really happens in that facility option portion where, again, you're looking at kind of plugging and playing different, different components. If we do this, what's the net result on the dollars and what's the impact programmatically? So that's an important piece of the, the process. And really, these aren't really sequential necessarily. They're all components. And like I mentioned, we'll do some facility options or you, you would. And then you go back in the community and say, here's kind of the options that we're looking at. What's the feedback, steering team's input? Then kind of go back through that cycle until everyone, you know, what the communities, you know, what they're needing and hearing and are comfortable supporting, the steering teams and align with, and of course, the board is. So that the goal is to get all three of those really on the same page. And then ultimately, it gets you to the updated capital facility plan or kind of that five-year rolling plan of capital needs where our infrastructure needs are in there, our enrollment needs are in there, curricular, all of those parts and pieces. So in 2014, that's in the binder, you have that. The phase two piece is kind of earmarked as a kind of a single or multiple sheet, but we'd really want to build that out to a full document with all the project listings, et cetera, to make sure you have a, a full view of an updated facilities plan. So that's really the, the overall process on the, the pre-planning items. Jeremy's going to talk a little bit here about phase two. He was here, really here during that process in 2014.
Okay. So one of the interesting things that happened as a result of the initial facility options planning from three years ago was when we went to the community, the, the end result was a need that identified $1.1 billion. And as Mr. Evans started to allude to, as we worked through the, the process with the committee, with the community, with the board, $1.1 billion was, it, it wasn't small enough, if you will, for the community to accept. So one of the things that we do in this process is really go to the community, go to the other stakeholders, steering committee, vet out all the options to find out what we feel collectively would be a good target for a bond program. So what, what I want to do real quick, everyone has a binder. I, I wanted to highlight just a few notes from the initial facilities capital plan from three years ago. So if you flip to tab number three, and it'll be the, the first sheet that's titled Phase Two Bond. So as Mr. Evans mentioned, the initial goal for the, the phase one bond was about safety, security, and capital improvements. It, it wasn't about, you know, increasing the capacity in the district, but that was one of the goals that was identified as a part of the phase two planning process. So as you look at the phase two bond there, you'll notice that there's, there's two sections sort of in that spreadsheet, if you will. One that's titled capital improvements and renovations at existing facilities. And then the other portion down there in the gray is increased capacity in the high growth areas in the district. So at the time, again, three years ago, these were the numbers that of the identified $1.1 billion. After we vetted through the community, come up with $421 million for the phase one bond, we identified a need of, again, at the time, $376 million to take care of some of these items. So this is really, and, and once you go behind the first initial page, the full initial capital facilities plan is in front of you as well. So again, this single sheet identifies the, the, the need that was identified for phase two. And again, just looking at the slide, one thing that we're going to focus on in phase two is increasing capacity. There's still some schools that have capital improvement needs that were not taken care of in the, in the first phase. So phase two, one of the goals is to take care of those. One, one of the big messages, whenever we do, you know, bond planning, referendums, is we want to ensure that whatever the commitment that was made to the taxpayers, to the voters, we want to be sure that we follow through on those. So that's one of the, the goals, again, as part of the pre-planning process, is that everything that we've identified to be taken care of does get taken care of as well. And this one in particular, it's site acquisition and increasing capacity for the phase two portion. Again, and at the time of the facilities capital plan, we, we identified $376 million in need. There's a lot of detail also that we have that, that encompasses that result. So again, big picture, phase two, the big goal was increasing capacity in high growth areas and again, taking care of capital improvements where phase two did not.
Thank you, Jeremy. So now we're going to move into kind of the underneath, underneath this matrix, there's some, some detail we want to make sure we talk about. So we really broke it into two components, kind of the new school sites and then the capital improvement. So the next dozen or so slides really speak to that. I'm just going to really introduce this first one and then we're going to pass it to Casey. And he's really going to walk through demographics behind the middle school, or sorry, the elementary school need, the middle school need and the high school need. And then we'll continue on the other side of that conversation with the capital improvements. But just to let everybody know, the, the sites we're talking about really are these five, these five facilities, two elementary schools, one at Tenth and Pine, one at, off of Fort Crook Road, you can see here, of course, the Gateway Site. I think everybody's familiar with that. If not, that's an existing site that the district, district owned off of 42nd in T-ish. And then of course, the, the two high school sites, the 60th and L or the former Orion High Site, and then the 156th and Ida Street Site. Just, just a high level of the elementary schools, the, again, at the Tenth and Pine, the site acquisition's 100% complete. The target for that site would be a 600 student elementary school. Fort Crook Road, they're working on or finalizing a site acquisition that's near completion. But again, the same goal would be that 600 student school. So we need some parameters to help with that initial planning and usually start with kind of that overall capacity piece.
Just a comment on the elementary schools, because I know some folks have asked why we're not doing some of the same work that we're doing at our high schools with some of the design work. And the reality is, we've built a lot of elementaries. In fact, I think we've built 10 or 11 over the last nine or 10 years. So we have a lot of designs from the new Gateway Elementary to several others that are right now under construction, including Bell Ryan, Western Hills. So we have a lot of that design work already versus a high school. Correct me if I'm wrong, the last high school built was Burke and that was 1976.
Six, if I believe.
Six.
Seventy-four, seventy-six.
So you can see the gap there. Plus the, the complexity of a high school is much different than an elementary school too, due to curriculum content, activities and so on. So I just wanted to make that clarification because I've had people ask, why on these new elementary sites, aren't you doing the same level of work? Well, the reality is, we've already done that work on elementary schools. So it's not quite as intensive as a high school.
Thank you. So I'm going to go over some demographic considerations. We'll look at elementary level, the middle school level and the high school level. You'll see a lot of different statistics in here, a number of maps. I just want to point your attention to, again, the, the binder you've been provided. The fourth section has a very large chart. It's got building capacity and utilization calculations for every school in the district. Number of different pieces of data in there for you if you want to look at any individual building. Section five has a lot of maps. I like to make maps, so there's a number of maps in there. We only are going to show a few of them, but there's some supplemental ones provided. And then section six just has a few different graphs, looking at historical enrollments or populations over the last seven years, and then projected population over the next seven years. When we look at elementary school, we see our kindergarten class sizes are some of the largest we've had since the 1970s. 1970 was kind of the peak enrollment for OPS, peak enrollment across, really across state of Nebraska and across the country. But over the last decade, we've seen populations of our kindergarten classes around 4,000 or more in most years. Overall, kindergarten through fifth grade growth is up about 2.2% over the last seven years. When we look at the neighborhood population, the students living in individual areas, attending our regular elementary schools, we see South Omaha has increased by about 4% over the last seven years. And that's defined by the Bryan and South high school attendance areas. North Omaha has increased by about 3% over the last seven years, and that's defined by the Benson Central and North high school attendance areas. And West Omaha has decreased just over 3% over the last seven years, and that's defined by the Burke and Northwest attendance areas. And when I go through and, and show you those statistics for, for middle school and high school, those will be the same breakouts for geography. The decrease in West Omaha is primarily a result of option outs from the school district. We've seen 300, 400 student increase in the number of K through five students choosing to attend another public school district from that area of the district over the last five, six, seven years. And so that's about the same amount of decrease we've seen in that, that grade level, K through five over the last seven years, enrolling in, in OPS schools. Looking forward, the kindergarten through fifth grade growth is projected to be about 3% or 4% over the next five years. Now that is if birth rates continue as they're, as they currently are, and if our kindergarten capture rates remain steady. Projecting kindergarten and in turn, elementary enrollments or populations over a long period of time is the most difficult. Many of those students, if you think about what's the population of K5 in seven years, none of those students have enrolled in OPS yet. So we really depend on our birth rates remaining or, or continuing on the trend that they're on, and also our kindergarten capture rates to remain the same to try and predict those, those population growths. Taking a look at utilization, this map tries to depict the enrollment as it compares to the capacity of each of the individual elementary schools across the district. So the darker the green color, the more under capacity the building is, the more space there potentially is in that building. And the darker the orange or red color, the more over capacity the building is. Overall, there's about 27 of our 63 elementary schools are over their rated capacity. In South Omaha, you see kind of the most intense amount of, of overcapacity schools. Schools like Highland Elementary is at about 200% capacity, meaning they have doubled the amount of students that are, the school is, is rated to handle. Castlar at 155%, Spring Lake at 152%, and Bancroft at about 140% are just some other examples in South Omaha. This capacity chart and the, the rest that you, that you will see does try to take into account all of the additional capacity that was added in the phase one bond. Now, as Mr. Evans suggested earlier, that was not the overall goal of that, the, the first phase, but there was capacity added to a number of schools in some situations where we were able to reduce portables in phase one. Overall, the identified projects in phase two, there's four of them that would relieve elementary schools in South Omaha specifically. Those are the two new elementary schools that were described, in addition to Spring Lake and in addition to Highland. Looking at portable distribution across the district, currently there are about 148 portables across the district at elementary schools, and that's at 29 different elementary school sites. Again, though it was not the intended purpose of the first phase of the bond, there are about 60 portables that are going to be removed potentially over that first phase. So at the end of that, there will be roughly 88 portables remaining at the elementary school level. Phase two, again, would help reduce some amount of those, those portables that are remaining if the projects identified in, in phase two were to be completed. You see a similar trend as you saw in capacity, South Omaha with a high number of portables. Additionally, you see kind of a swath of portables in that kind of western portion of the district. Some of the, those portables are the ones that are going to be removed under phase one because of some renovations and/or capacity that's been added to those As Mark suggested earlier, we have the Gateway Site, a, a plot of land that is south of Gateway Elementary School, already owned by the district, so no acquisition was required under phase one. I'm told that current test fits suggest a 1,000 student building would fit on that site. So when we look at middle school demographics and change over the last seven years, we see kind of the, the largest increase that we've seen at the grade levels. Almost 12% increase in grade six through eight. And this is a result of some of those larger kindergarten classes, again, making their way through middle school. If you look back seven years ago, those classes hadn't quite made their way to middle school, and they're just kind of starting to, to find their way into the middle school level and increase that population. Again, when we look at neighborhood population of students attending our regular middle schools, we see South Omaha with the most growth of about 17% over the last seven years. North Omaha by about 13% in grade six through eight at the la, over the last seven years. And then West Omaha increased by about 4% over the last seven years. And again, as we look forward, we see a projected growth of about 3% or 4% over the next five years. So additional growth as some of those larger classes move their way through grade six through eight. Now, when we looked at elementary school utilization, we looked at it as enrollment compared to capacity of the school. This middle school map is intended to depict the neighborhood population of students in grade six through eight or five through eight, in the case of Buffett, King Science and Mars, as compared to the capacity of the school. And again, it's capacity as a result of phase one. So on addition to Norris is, is depicted here. Overall, you'll see that if the district were to move towards a six-eight scenario at the schools like Lewis and Clark, Norris and Bryan, that are not currently slated to add additional sixth grade students, they would be significantly over capacity, capacity to the point where they could not add additional sixth grade students. And again, that's Norris with the addition that will be finished under phase one. Additionally, you see Mars Middle School over capacity with its current 5-8 population. And then schools like Hale, McMillan and Monroe, whom transitioned sixth grade this year, are all over capacity to some degree. Although if you look at those schools compared to, or based on enrollment, none of those schools are actually over capacity from the 16, 17 school year. If you do look at enrollment, there are five schools that are over capacity. That is Bryan, Buffett, Lewis and Clark, Mars and Morton. And there's a map that depicts the, the enrollment as a, a utilization as it compares to capacity as well in your packet. Three of the additional projects that were outlined in phase two would relieve middle school populations. Those in addition at Morton and Lewis and Clark, and then obviously the new Gateway Middle School, or the school on the Gateway Site. Just like elementary school, a map looking at the portable distribution across the district. Currently, there are 73 portables at, at seven middle schools across the district. As many as 23 of these could be removed as a result of work under phase one. That would leave about 50 portables remaining after the, the completion of phase one work. Additional, an additional school in South Omaha, additions to Lewis and Clark and Morton would also reduce portables if those, if those projects were to be completed under phase two. And then finally, at the high school level, obviously two sites gained from the phase one bond, 60th and L as well as 156th and Ida Street. Both of those locations roughly a 1,500 student high school would be located there. If we look at high school population, we see slightly less growth than at middle school, but still about 7% increase over the last seven years. If we split that again, out by South Omaha, North Omaha and West Omaha, you see South Omaha grew by about 19% over that time period, North Omaha by about 2% or pretty much remaining steady, and West Omaha increased by about 9%. Again, looking over the next seven years, we see about a 7% increase, or about 1,000 students or 1,000 plus students over the next seven years being added to the high school population. Two other points that I think are important as we look at how our high schools are utilized in the district. First of all, about 50% or half of our students in the high school level do not attend their neighborhood school. They attend a school that is, that is an option for them. Additionally, we have about 1,000 students in the district that don't attend a traditional high school. So that includes sites like Blackburn, Accelerate, Independent Study, the Teen Literacy Center. So when we think about utilization of our buildings, there's another 1,000 students out there that are kind of not in the mix when we, when we discuss our regular high schools. So again, utilization on this map is slightly different than the past two. This looks to compare the current enrollment of these high schools with a 1,500 student cap or an ideal cap put on each of the high schools. So when you view all of our high schools, our seven high schools from a 1,500 student cap, you see that all schools except for Benson are over capacity currently. Central and South with about 24, 2,500 students, significantly over capacity. Burke High not close, or not far behind with about 2,000 students over that 1,500 student cap. And then Northwest, North and Bryan, all about 1,600 to 1,700 students, so over that 1,500 student cap. When you look at the high schools as, on an enrollment perspective, so current enrolled students, Bryan, Burke, Central and South are all over capacity this year. And when you look at the home attendance area perspective, the nine through 12th grade students who live in the attendance areas of the high schools, you have Bryan, Northwest and South who are over capacity, and Benson and Central approaching 90%. So a lot of differences in terms of utilization there when you look at it in the different perspectives. But much of that, again, a result of our student assignment plan and the propensity of, of students to make choice, about half of those students choosing a school that's not their neighborhood school. So when we look at an addition of 1,000 students or 1,000 plus students over the next seven years, that'll bring our high school population that attends our regular high schools, not including those 1,000 that are in alternative programs or other, other locations, to about 14,000 total students. If you spread that among seven high schools evenly, you get about 2,000 students per high school. If you were to spread that over nine high schools, you get about 15 to 16, excuse me, yeah, 15 to 1,600 students per high school. So very much closer to that 1,500 student ideal capacity. When we look at the students who have chosen to option to another public school district, this does not include students who go to private schools, we see about 2,400 OPS students in grades nine through 12, or about 18% of that total population that's attending a public school, has chosen to attend a public high school that's outside of OPS. If you look at Northwest and Burke combined, those two attendance areas produce about 1,200 students that have optioned to attend a, another public high school outside of OPS. And Bryan and South have about 800 students who have chosen to attend another public high school. Burke High School specifically has about 34% of its, of its students, neighborhood students in grades nine through 12, that attend a, a public high school that is not in OPS. And then finally, a portable distribution, not quite as interesting as the other maps, but 27 portables currently at three different high schools, Northwest, Burke and Bryan. Again, current bond work had, potentially will allow us to remove or reutilize about 12 portables, which would leave another 15 portables still remaining at the high school level after phase one work. And again, obviously, building two high schools would, would work to remove additional portables in the district, the high school level.
Thank you, Casey. So we're going to, we're going to move off of the new, new sites component and talk a little bit about the capital improvement or the existing facilities aspect of it. Again, I'm going to reference the 1.3 out of the facilities capital plan or the, the phase two bond, bond matrix, that, that tab number three, piece of paper there. Again, broken down into the, the grade level components, if you will, elementary, middle and high school. The $69.8 million really represents work at Adams, Catlin, Conestoga, Edison, Highland, King, Masters, Pinewood and Spring Lake. And as Casey had mentioned, from an additions perspective, Highland, Masters and Spring Lake. Just one thing to note, I believe the addition that was called for in Masters, I, I want to say it was two classrooms. That's something that we were able to do in the 2014 bond program. They needed a storm shelter. We were able to provide a multipurpose space for that. We still need to fully build those out as classrooms, but a large investment from an infrastructure perspective for that addition's been done. So that's something that has been a benefit. The work related to the Adams and Catlin, those, those other projects, maybe with the exception of Pinewood where it's a, more of an open to close, but we're looking at a modernization of the building. So similar to an Indian Hill or Crest Ridge type of scope of work. It's not just purely focused on infrastructure. We, we look to reconfigure the front entries to make sure that they're safe and secure. But just for a comparable scope of work, if you will, what would happen at, at, at one of these particular sites would be very comparable to the current work going on. Of course, each site has very specific components, so we'd have to, to match all that up. But just generally speaking, that's what's represented there. At the middle school level, really what we're talking about at, at Morton and Lewis and Clark is to modernize the building and then provide additions large enough to allow for a full six-eight integration at those sites. So again, that would be similar to a beverage, if you will, where there'd be substantial additions and then modernizing the existing facility space as well. And then at the high school level, it's a little bit more unique. We're talking about replacing all the windows, more sustainability, some smart energy things. I know there's some mechanical system items out there that we'd want to capture, but a little bit more random or a little bit more sporadic. This really came from the existing facility assessment needs, et cetera. So that's what's really identified in the, in the current capital facilities plan. And I wanted to, we wanted to provide you that information as some framework to have, a little bit of conversation about if you did all of that phase two work and you overlaid that, and, and there's still definitely a lot of details to kind of comb through. We've just done a, a quick kind of review of the 2014 bond program, the assessment that DLR provided, and what phase two might look like. There still are some remaining priority one needs, which are immediate. Priority two needs are within a year, and priority three are within two to five years. So even if phase two occurred, and, and this isn't uncommon in a district of your size, again, the capital need in the, the facilities that you have, there, there's kind of a continuous need, if you will. But we did want to make sure that as part of that pre-planning effort, we really want to understand, what is that remaining priority one? Are those items that, that we can address sooner? Are there other avenues to, to address them, whether that's maintenance or if there's some opportunity at the end of 2014? What are the priority two components of work? Again, are we talking about carpet replacement, boiler? What, what are those? And et cetera with, with item number three. But I know that you folks have been privy to kind of the, the mass of information behind the assessment and kind of that line by line detail. But that's really what it takes to get to really provide you folks the information where some tough decisions sometimes have to be made, much like to be made, much like you did in the 2014 program where we'd really like to do everything, but we know we have to draw some lines, and this has got to move into the next one, or it would move into our next capital cycle. But we want to make sure that we can provide all the right layers of information for that assessment or for you folks to review. And as I mentioned, talking with steering team about that, making sure that in the community, there's alignment on that, et cetera. So again, there, there's still that existing facilities component. Just real quickly, on the, on pre-referendum approvals, these are, these are items here that we would recommend that are kind of hard decisions, or hard date decisions, if you will, for the board. That's, that's getting an updated capital facility plan, which ultimately is your, is your base or your, the foundation for a future referendum. Provide the staff approval to work with legal to draft the actual referendum. This is the language that would ultimately go out to the voters that they would review and then ultimately approve, or vote on. And then the, the final piece is getting that, that vote from the board to say, yes, this is the referendum we want. And, and what that will trigger is the ability for staff to file with the Election Commission, or, or legal to file with the Election Commission. And I believe you have to do that 50 days, if I recall correctly, 50 days prior to when you would want to receive votes. So those are really the, the three or four fundamental approvals from a board perspective or an action item perspective that we would typically see as the district would work through a future planning effort. Moving into really the, the last segment here, so if you thumb over to Tab Eight, you're going to have three 11-by-17 sheets. Gonna, gonna talk about them a little bit individually, but what you should know is they all have the same steps. It's just the timing in between the steps, because, you know, from a process perspective, we're big believers on regardless. You want to make sure you work through the whole entire process and make sure that you're doing all the due diligence. It would just depend on, hey, we're gonna have some back-to-back meetings, or no, there's some time in between. But the November of 17 election, at this point in time, if that was an option the district wanted to consider, it would be considered a special election. There isn't any current general election planned. We'd have to work with the Election Commission on the filing, and then what process the board would want to work through if that would be something they'd want to look at opening polls for, or do a mail-in. And we have a little bit of information on that we can discuss. The May of 18 would be aligned with a primary election. The governor, I'm sure everyone, that announcement's been made, but ultimately, that's the primary for, for the govern, governor component. The board would have to file around that March timeframe, March of 18 timeframe, with the Election Commission. So again, we would pinpoint that specific date. I believe the date in May's already been identified, so we can kind of work backwards and, and know, okay, this board meeting would have to be the, the drop-dead approval date, so there's time to file. And then similar to the November timeframe, there is a general election there. This would be something that could be placed on the ballot with that. And just, again, providing a little bit of information regarding that filing date, because that's just a statute-driven date. If you miss that, you missed the, missed the opportunity. So again, we would, we would kind of dial that in or pinpoint that specific date. The, again, as far as the actual schedules, I wasn't gonna go through kind of line-by-line, but, but what you'll see is the steps that we identified in the process now turned into specific kind of action item meetings where we'd want to meet with internal staff on the facility validation, like I had mentioned, with, with maintenance and operation and curriculum and those folks. We'd want to get the steering team, you know, kind of pulled together fairly quickly, again, depending on, on your timeframe, to get them assembled. Lot of different folks, lot of different meetings, so a big challenge is just kind of getting it started and coordinated, and then getting people used to meeting on a regular basis with everything else everyone has to do. So, and then of course, as time goes on and the, the district makes a decision, we, you know, to transition over to kind of the political action campaign component of it after the board files, then they would kind of take over and, and work on promoting or, or working through the conversation from a campaigning perspective with the community and other folks. So again, just wanted to, to briefly talk about the, the scheduling aspect. All the same steps, just a little bit more time in between, community meetings, steering team conversations, et cetera. I think everybody understands this, you know, the, the, the time will go by quicker. There's, there's a whole lot of moving parts. Hopefully, tonight, the, the goal wasn't to go into every specific project and say, this is the assessed component, this is, but to give everybody kind of a reminder of the process, and some folks, a view of, of the different layers and different parts and pieces that we'd need to work through, or that the district would need to work through as kind of that pre-planning effort. In addition to, to all of the, the steering team-type of conversations, plenty of other conversations with community entities, and Mr. Evans mentioned the Chamber and the Road, you know, really, really want to maximize exposure to what the district's trying to accomplish. We don't have any more specific information to present. I would ask if anyone on the panel wanted to add anything that I may have missed, or wanted to reiterate anything, and if not, we can try to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. We will then do board questions. Will you? Oh. I think he can hear us. I'm not sure how he lets us know if he has a question or not, though. There he is. Ben, do you have any questions?
Rob?
Now try it.
Can you hear me?
It's a little low.
Okay, so.
Testing.
Hold on just a second, Ben.
Okay.
Okay, so since we have excused Mr. Perlman from the meeting, there is a legal question on whether or not he can verbally participate in asking questions or not. And so it has been recommended that instead of having him ask questions, if he does have questions, that he email those to Mr. Ray, and Mr. Ray can bring them up.
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone here have questions? Mrs. Godding?
Okay. Well, I have quite a few. I may reserve the right to ask more as we go along, but I can't remember, and so just from a historical perspective, for especially the three people who are listening that weren't on the board before, we did do polling before we went out. Does anyone here remember what the cost of polling is? That's typically paid for by that bond campaign committee? Is that correct?
Correct. I think there were, it was about $40,000. There were, if I recall, kind of three, there was some early polling components to that, and then as the process moved forward, some additional or more detailed questions, and then kind of to a final solution when the plan was really solidified, if you will. So it was a layered approach. We could try to figure out specific kind of components, but generally speaking, that's, that's the value you'd be looking at.
And, and just for information, I know one of the points that we finally came down to was dollar amounts, to see where people were get, were comfortable at, so that we could have a good sense of idea for where we thought we could put the number at, right? Even though we knew it. So from a historical perspective, there was also a steering committee or team put together at that time, and it was a fairly large group. I want to say there were 50-ish sort of people, is that right? That kind of were part of, from all over town, and kind of all walks of life and backgrounds that participated as well, and really brought to us that 1.1 million. And, and they were very comfortable, I think, with $640 million, right? But when we got into the polling, that's how it got narrowed down. So I just want to share a little bit of that perspective. Thinking back to the DLR presentation last fall, I think what they said, and I'm just trying to remember, was that about $15 million in the analysis of future work would be completed through Phase One? I remember asking that question, so it seems like that was about what it was. My question on, and, and so I don't know, you know, if, if we've been tracking that. So I know when DLR did the work, then it was to go into the OPS district system, and then as work was completed, it would get ticked off. Are we doing that, or is that not quite all the way implemented?
That's not quite completed. However, as Mark said in his presentation, we've looked at those things, you know, we had in Priority One and Two about $33 million worth of work, and then Priority Three, which was three to five years out.
Right.
We had another 208 million. But as Mark said, some of that is being covered in Phase One of the bond.
Right.
Some of it would be covered in the Phase Two that we had already identified. So that's why the numbers on Priority One, Two, and Three are lower than what we saw in the comprehensive facility assessment.
So I think, Slide 26, so the 15 million probably goes back to that Phase One number of what would be completed in those priorities. So in, when it says Priority Three here, and then we look back at Tab, what is it? Five, six? The DLR work, seven. The first sheet shows the two-to-five-year district needs of 208 million. I just want to confirm, I think what Dr. Turnquist just said was that of that 208 million that shows up in Priority Three, we're listing 58 million on Slide 26, which is in addition to the work that is already shown on page.
That's Phase Two work.
Section Three, Page One.
Correct.
Phase Two work, okay.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to make sure that we knew that. Then I had a question for Casey on the 2,400 students that opt out. You said that none of those were private school students. Are those students, students that we've been tracking through time, or is that just students that we know about that opted out after eighth grade? I just want to make sure I understand that number.
Yeah, so not all of the students optioned out after eighth grade. There is a population that does that every year.
Right.
But many of them, I would say most of them are, you know, middle school or elementary school, they've optioned out. If you look at the, you know, the option-out trends for elementary school and middle school, they look very similar to that high school map, the same locations. So students are not just opting out at the high school level, but prior to that, at elementary and middle school as well.
Okay, so that 2,400 number goes into the, it's all high school students who we know over time have opted out, but in that four-year period.
Yeah, basically, at the beginning of this year, all the 9th through 12th graders that lived in our district that did not attend an OPS high school. Not including private school students.
Right, right. Do we know what the cost of a mail-in would be? Have we, do we have those in our?
Yeah.
I just have no idea.
Yeah, we've, we've done, we've talked with the Douglas County Election Commission. We've talked with a, a few other folks that have some, I think, some great knowledge on mail-in. And I think for the district of this size, you're probably looking at a $400,000 commitment.
And then I just want to.
Luanne, if I can jump in with a question really quick, because it's related to that. Do we decide if it is a mail-in, or does the Election Commission office decide how that election is carried out?
I believe, I believe that, that would be something this board would, would ultimately decide on. And then if, if you do go down the polling route, there are some additional approvals kind of outside of the district that would, you know, weigh in or want to know what kind of turnout are you expecting, and some other information, just to make sure it's justifiable to open, open the polls. But whether, what style you have is, again, I believe, up to the, the board's discretion.
So either, either way, about 400,000?
I'm not sure.
We don't know what it would be.
On, on opening the polls, if I understand it, I think that would, it would be, be additional. I don't know the exact value. The, the Election Commission has kind of their in-house component of it. What we understand that to be about 170,000 to 200,000. And then you have kind of the, the district or the, the actual cost, and there's some decisions that would need to be made. You can, you can send out the ballot to mail-in without the return envelope or stamp, and people can self-perform. So there's all these other kind of little decisions inside of the mail-in election. Some things can simplify voter turnout, some, you know, it costs a few more dollars, and again, in the sense of the 50, 50-cent stamp, or whatever that value is. So that can save some cost on the actual mail-in process, but voters then have to go find the stamp or the envelope, you know, so there, there are some decisions that can be made, and we can try to digest or get some, a little bit more specific on, again, kind of that option, if we did this and this, what are we really looking at, or this and this, is that different, to, to help provide further clarity.
Okay. And then I just want to, I want to thank both, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Connie.
One of the benefits, if you did go for a November election and you did the mail-in, is that you would take advantage of lower interest rates. As the interest rate goes up, you may save with the interest rate, and then also the construction period, because if it was in November, you could start construction right away in the spring. Otherwise, if you have a May election, it may be a delay in when you start construction.
I think that's a really good point. The interest rate piece is a, a good point. The fact that our ratings from Standard and Poor's hopefully would still be good in the fall, which is a, I think, a very important factor. And, and I think we took advantage of low interest rates on Phase One, so even, even though we're seeing roughly, we don't know, 14 million right, right now under, we also are seeing lower interest rates, which will bring that total bond cost down as well. So I want to thank Mark and Jeremy for bringing up, under Tab Three, the first page, the title reads Phase Two Bond. It says, "The following list of projects would be completed as part of the Phase Two Bond to be approved by voters in May of 2017. Prior to issuing the final bond amount, OPS will confirm projected cost for these projects." So we essentially, we got, we got the vote for Phase One because of this statement right here, and because of the work that needed to be done. I think it's really important that we have the integrity as a board to follow through on Phase Two and do what we told the voters that we were going to do, and the commitments that we made already to voters, which is why Phase One was so well-received. And like Mark said, it was probably one of the highest percentage voted, voting for in favor of it of any urban school district, we think, in the last 15 years around the United States. So I just want to point out those two sentences, because I think they're really important to, to us as a board, our integrity and where we stand. So just want to point that out.
Mr. Snow?
First of all, thank you guys for presenting today on a hot Monday afternoon.
First of all, thank you guys for presenting today on a hot Monday afternoon. I'm sure you guys would rather be sitting by the pool at seven o'clock. Sun's still out, actually. Quick question, actually a couple. So the two elementary schools, the middle school and the two high schools, if the district, with their, I think the set date for these schools was 2020 for the opening of these schools, was there, what would be the date if we-
I think the initial target, if I recall, was August 19.
19, so 1920. If we, 2019, so that is, okay, yeah. 1920, 19, okay, you confused me now, okay. 1920 school year, I apologize. If the board decided, and we had a discussion like this, went for a May 2018 bond, would that push these schools back a year?
Yes, and the challenger, the, risk may not be the right word, but the reality of trying to complete enough site work at these sites with their large footprint to allow construction to continue to occur all through winter is really the big challenge, is can you get enough work in? One of the things we really focus on when we start work in the spring or summer is we need to get enough work in to work all the way through the winter, so you don't lose that year. So the challenge would be is can you develop enough site work or footing packages, and you can do a lot of creative things, but to stay working during the winter? The conceptual design that's been done to date doesn't give us enough information to say, yes, because of this footing system, or because of these conditions, we're confident if you started in May, for example, you'd be able to work through that full winter. So the challenge you run into there is losing, or not being very efficient in that first winter, winter build cycle, and ultimately that kind of adds a year. So if you look at like a November to May comparison, you're not just talking about losing those few months, you're really talking about using kind of that year. So that's the, the November opportunity puts you in a position where, hey, the ground, the first thaw of ground, we can be out there doing site work, doing subsurface stuff, putting in utilities, doing all the things you have to do before footings are placed. And again, with the size of the facilities you're talking about, it's a pretty significant amount of work, all in a plan to ensure that you can do above-grade work during the winter time. Otherwise, you really can't do much. Or you, you know, some clients do prefer, let's spend the dollars and we're going to keep the ground thawed, and they spend a lot of dollars kind of trying to melt the frost away. It's just not a really advantageous way to go. If you know that's going to be a challenge, you know, build your schedule accordingly, and you can work within the seasonal parameters, so.
I, I'm going to add, I understood everything you said on that one.
It does impact your opening day.
I'm assuming it's a year. The same for November 2018, will that be just within that year, or is it two years? I'm just trying to-
No, it would be about a two-year. So the build timeline that we've generally laid out, you're looking at about three years. There's opportunities to always improve. So 28 months to 36, again, depending on structural systems, and I'm not trying to be vague, but that's just the reality of it, is how do you plan on building these buildings, and what is their overall size? So, but that's, you know, kind of a general rule, 18 months to build an elementary, you're looking at something three times the size or four times the size. You need about that in time as well. So really, in the community meetings that we've been having and the conversations, after conceptual design's done for the high schools, as an example, there's about a year's worth of time for a full design to happen. That doesn't mean you can't try to take advantage of, how do we do some site packages early while the rest of the design is being done? Those are some strategies that we've used in the 2014 program, and the marketplace is very equipped to handle. Once that's done, of course, then the build timeline kind of starts. But if you can build while you're finishing up the design, it just kind of shortens your overall construction duration, because you're doing multiple activities at the same time. But again, I will, just to kind of footnote, the conceptual design work being done doesn't give us enough design detail to come back and say, hey, we can do X, Y, and Z early, and it helps us this much on the back end. There's not enough detail-
How much would that, how much work, cost-wise, will have to be done if we did a May 2018 bond for that school to open up for the 1920 school year? I mean, this is going to be a question you can come back later.
It wouldn't open up for the 1920. It would, it would, the best opportunity you have would be the 2021 school year. So I'd have to study a little bit of the detail and get you something a little more definitive.
It's fine, you can come back to that. And just with Ms. Godding's, about, to the voters about the May 2017, for this work to start on these projects or to be up for a bond, when did that work actually have to start for us to have a bond in May 2017? That would have had to start back in the fall of last year?
Typically, I'm not sure what the pre-planning effort was before, but six or seven months prior, you're working through the pre-planning process. You, you know, you had a big advantage, you already identified really what you wanted to accomplish. So what we would have, you know, what we would have worked through is just making sure the existing scope of work meshes up with, you know, the most recent facility assessment, curriculum. You do kind of a micro version of a full, a pre-planning effort. Again, you're more of a validating mode than creating new information, since you already had, hey, these are the projects we want to do. And then we go in and really focus on, for example, the nine or 10 elementaries, making sure those scopes of work, costing-wise, they're still in line. Yep, that $69 million still represents what you want to do. Or we would say, hey, based on inflation, or there is this curricular reason to shift work at Edison and add this component, you know, that would be another $5 million. Is that something the board would want to consider? So you'd still do this, the process that we described. It would just be shortened and much more focused, again, because you already have, a lot of your facility option work's been done. You're really just in the mode of validating cost and alignment. Is this, the community still saying, yep, we still need the middle schools, the demographics still support that? You know, again, it's kind of a, much more of a validation than it would be kind of an overall, haven't done a bond program in 15 years, for example, like in 2014. We really need to get all of the needs out on the table and work through the full process.
Mark is absolutely correct. When we started the last bond, we didn't have a clue. They were dream sessions, and we had days and days of eight-hour meetings of people trying to give input, which we, which is where we finally came to the $1.2 billion worth of need. And then we kept dropping that down and down. I think the steering committee did recommend at a board meeting, 7/21, but then the polling showed that that wasn't going to fly, so it came down farther. But Mrs. Godding is correct. The promises in Phase Two are something that we test our integrity on.
Did you have a follow-up with Godding? Because otherwise, I think Mr. Ray has, okay.
So I have a couple just follow-ups to think about. And so I think in the fall, we did get the facility study done, and that was really critical to the component of getting the work done. And I think when we did the last bond, I mean, we did spend a tremendous amount of time, I think from about June until August, June, July, and August, we spent those three months heavily engaged in really trying to understand what the community said in May. So we had about four months of, I think, really, really intense meetings and work. My point isn't so much May of 2017, it's the fact that it's an integrity issue for us to follow through on what we said in the first bond. I think one of the other points that Connie brought up really clearly is that interest rate risk. We don't know what it's going to be, but we certainly hear the chatter out there, and so the better opportunity we have to lock in at some lower interest rates, I think, which we took advantage of in the first phase, it ends up saving. I mean, we know that that sixth sense may not fully be sixth sense when we get to the end of the day, and that's our goal or our hope. So I think those are just a couple important things to remember.
Mr. Ray.
So this is from Mr. Pearlman. So he's requesting an estimate from administration on how much it would cost the district annually to staff and maintain the five proposed new schools.
We didn't do an estimate of elementary or middle school, but we did for a high school to open a new high school. And that, we don't know how much of existing staff would be moved over, so that's an unknown. And it's really just a broad estimate, but we think it might be about $12.7 million to operate a high school with 1,500 students. And then, and the current state aid formula, there's a new school adjustment where you get additional money to help you open up the school and, you know, pay for the costs of doing that. And I'm estimating about $4 million from that to offset the costs for the first two years.
Just to add to that, it wouldn't be a one-to-one on students. I mean, obviously, the teacher's going to follow the students to some extent, but you do add some administrative, like you're going to have another principal. So there are some positions that don't follow the students, but a lot of them do. A large part of the teaching positions will follow the students, not so much on the custodial support, nutrition service, they won't shift. So those are kind of the ongoing costs of that. But on the other hand, if you increase enrollment, then you increase revenue, because there is a state formula that's going to go to the students too, which, which I think is the other part we're talking about, is recapturing some of the students we lose, as well as the growth that Casey went over earlier.
So that's a follow-up question, maybe Casey, if you know this off the top of your head or in your binder. Like to know, Mr. Pearlman would like to know Benson's capacity and attendance estimate for next year? And do you also know the percentage of students that opt out of Benson's home attendance area? And if not, then is it something you could provide?
So in the packet, in the fourth section, you can go to, I believe it's the third page, and you can see capacities for all the high schools, as well as current enrollments for this year. So Benson's rated capacity, so that's 26 students per full-size classroom that they have, is 1,846. Enrollment this year was 13,25, I believe, I don't know the projection off the top of my head, but I think they're closer to 1,400 for this next year, give or take a little bit. We still have a number of months before enrollments are finalized. And then the second question was-
Percentage of students that opt out of Benson's home attendance area?
Of Benson. Off the top of my head, no. I would put it probably somewhere close to, if we're talking about students who option to another OPS high school-
I would imagine it's out of the district.
Out of the district, it's only 8%. So it's pretty, pretty low. Those attendance areas that are not on the edge of the district don't tend to have a lot of students that are optioning to other or neighboring school districts.
The next question is for anybody that might have this answer. Is, are there any alternatives that have been looked at, or are we looking at any alternatives to building another West Omaha high school that would ease overcrowding without spending $70 million plus annual expenses? I'd like to see alternatives to building another West Omaha high school that would ease overcrowding without spending $70 million plus annual expenses.
I guess I'm, I'm not sure what the question exactly is leading to. The cost in Tab Three, it looks like $60 million for the cost of a high school.
And if I could just interrupt real quick, just to remind everybody, he hasn't, doesn't have the binder, so he doesn't have the tabs as well.
Oh, okay. So sorry, the binder shows $60 million. I think what we've tried to do is help students in Northwest Omaha alternatively before. So that's why there's lots of busing out of Northwest Omaha to the rest of the community. But it's very clear that to get to other areas, and there's only one school, Benson, that has any capacity available, it's inadequate for the number of students opting out of the area. Takes me 25 minutes to get from my house to Benson. It takes, it's a very short period of time to get to Millard North. I can be there in 10 minutes. The new Elkhorn High School, I think I can be there in 10 minutes. I can be to the Bennington High School within 15 minutes. So I think that one of the things we're trying to do is retain students within the district. The problem is, there's no place to go. I mean, there's really no alternative, because there's no open spaces. You know, what we could do is, I suppose we could say that at Burke, we won't allow any students within the district to transfer to Burke, and we'll allow all Northwest Omaha-area students to be bused to Burke. I mean, we could do that and shut off Burke from the rest of the district. You know, I don't know how popular that would be. But I think what we're trying to do is retain students, and we really only have about 300 slots available district-wide, and that doesn't, that doesn't accommodate the number of students opting out. I took a look at Beveridge, Buffett, and Davis. Beveridge students opt out at a rate of 34%. Buffett students opt out at a rate of 22%. And Davis students opt out at a rate of 21%. I'm losing at, one of my elementary schools close to 30% of the fifth graders next year, because they know the high school won't be built in time, and so they're all opting out. That's a very high percentage. So I think our goal here is to try to retain students, and I guess, from my perspective, that's what I'd like to see us do. It certainly creates a more well-rounded district and community when we can do that. And so anyway, that, I guess that's my perspective. There's, there's not a whole lot of places, there's nowhere they can go. I mean, we can only shove people into so many closets and, to teach, and there just aren't spaces. So I think, I think the only option is to transfer out to another district or a private school, because there's just not enough space.
Ms. Williams.
So since we're talking about one of my schools, I'm going to talk about my sub-district. But part of this for me is that Benson is growing in their, their numbers, which is amazing. And it's a great time to be at Benson. But we also need the second phase. And actually, out of my 13 buildings, 11 of my buildings only received fire, life, safety, security. So I guess the challenge of this conversation is, because the two, Florence, which we did the groundbreaking ceremony a couple weeks ago, Benson also has the academies, which are very important, and they are gaining some traction. But for my sub-district, the question is going to be, what are we going to do for Subdistrict One? What makes this bond appeal to them? And right now, there's not a lot on the table. We got the least amount of bond dollars, quite honestly, most of them. You know, the budget on the facility study was $13,734. So I think eight of my 13 schools only got that. So I'm, I'm going to be curious to, I support the new high schools also. But I'm also curious to see what is Subdistrict One going to get out of this next phase? Is that a dual-language school? Is it, I mean, what, there's got to be something, because you can't just rule out this sub-district. We're the highest poverty, we're the most diverse and growing. You know, Spanish speakers are growing in my sub-district by the numbers. And so in this conversation, I want also know what's going to happen for Subdistrict One, and what, what can happen in those buildings. Whether that's looking at, again, a dual-language, we've talked about a dual-language school in North Omaha, to me, that is going to be something that you're going to have to, that we're going to have to bring to the table for that, for the base of constituents that I represent.
And I think if I can comment, I think that's something that we, we tried to specifically do during the first 2014 bond, was we looked at, are we, are we making sure every, all parts of the city are benefiting from this? It's not just an investment in one part. We wanted to make sure-
I, and I understand that, but I also have to say-
But I, I'm sorry, what I was just leaning towards was, that that's something we have to do again for, if we do move forward with the Phase Two, that's something we need to do as well, to make sure there is-
Absolutely.
Something that's adding investment to all parts of our city as well.
Right. Well, and that was the purpose of me saying that, is because we got the least out of it. We came out, we also voted for it, but now we're going to also need to see something happening in the sub-districts. So that was just my point.
Mr. Ray.
So this is a little bit delayed in the conversation, but this was a follow-up to some things that Mrs. Godding talked about with Phase Two, and some of the things that the previous board had committed to in Phase Two. It's our fiduciary, sorry, duty to look out for the financial well-being of the district, and no matter what problem- duty to look out for the financial well-being of the district, and no matter what promises a past board may have made, I, Mr. Pearlman, do not view it as a lack of integrity or integrity to constantly reevaluate the fiscal condition of the district in the light of unexpected changes. Period. End quote.
Period?
Period. No, I added the period to the quote.
You added the period.
I was about to say, it's like, man.
Mr. Snow.
Did anybody else? So thinking of this, I think this is, I'm trying to figure out, actually, I don't know if this goes to Mr. Evans or Mr. Summers, on the number that was presented today. Are there projects, are there schools, are there facilities, that their need went from Phase 3 to high priority, like, you know, something drastic that has to be, that if we're going to put up a bond in the future, that, I mean, now's the time to add this school or program to this bond? Because I'm trying to see if this, if we are going to go towards a bond, is the number going to be the 376, or is it going to add more? Or do we have to adjust some of those things in there? So I don't know who would...
I can let Mr. Evans follow, or just from our perspective, the number will change. Your district continues to evolve, enrollment continues to move around, there's some trends, program, dual languages mentioned. But to say here today, nope, if you, if you just kind of dust this off and do that, you're not going to probably meet your full needs. So really, you know, what, what, you know, from a next-step perspective, is to do exactly what you're talking about, is go back, kind of reverse engineer what we knew as Phase 2, start plugging in the very specific information that DLR has provided, having the discussions and doing exactly what you're indicating, is, hey, this did change. Or when we started really working with all the curriculum specialists and the high school elements, this is the feedback we got from the community. This component of the programming really needs to be there. It wasn't in the original piece, it's got to be in there. They're just very emphatic on this piece. What do you folks want to do? So for sure, the number would change, you know, and that the goal would be, you're still in the same range, or you kind of look potentially, again, what would the community support? You need to look at offsets. And there's, in every bond program that we work with, there always are tough decisions, especially in a district that's growing, as you are, with the similar-age facilities. There's always something more. And again, that was kind of the, the purpose of, hey, even if you did all of Phase 2 as you know it today, you still have some Priority 1, 2, and 3 needs that you got to kind of figure out, again, as the next five-year wave, you know, two or three years, if you're sitting here from now, those are going to move into a plan, if you will. So that's our perspective, or that's what we see historically. But Mr. Evans?
No, I think you, I think you captured it pretty well. I think they're never static numbers, because you reestablish your steering committee, you begin to present all this to them, and it can shift a little bit, and you can change some, some expectations. For example, not saying you would, but what if you, instead of a 1,400-student high school, you had 1,200 students to shave a cost, or because you believed it was more educationally sound? There's things that can happen that come from steering committees. Programmatic changes, the DLR report, all of those have impacts. That, that facility study didn't exist when this list was put together. We didn't have that. So you've got new information today that a steering committee would probably react to. And then you would react back to them, and it goes back and forth. And that's how it's been every bond issue I've been a part of. It, it's a living document for quite a while until we really get it nailed and hammered down. Because it's tough decisions, very tough decisions on what is on it and what gets left off it. And they're, they're never easy, and no matter what you do, you won't get everything that everybody wanted. It's just impossible. So you try to do as much as you can. That's why you have a steering committee. That's why you take a document like this that shows what we told the voters back in 14, and it was published in the World Herald, and it was part of the conversation. So that's certainly a starting point, the DLR piece is a starting point, too. So you're ahead of the curve on that. That's, usually you don't have this. So you're, you're further down the road than, than most cases. And the purchasing of the land is very unique, and you usually don't have that. I've been in bond issues where we struggled for the first two years of the bond issue, trying to put the land together, because that's, as you know from this process, that's been a pretty good journey, just to get all this land under our belt, which, as you know from tonight, we're pretty much there now, which is really quite an awesome feat, when you think about how many large pieces of property were available in Northwest and South. Oh, that's, that was quite a feat in and of itself. So anyway, so that's, that's my perspective, is that it would do some shifting as we bounced it off steering committees and began to put it together. I wouldn't think this would be etched in stone.
Dr. Turnquist.
One other thing that's important in terms of financial responsibility is, when you look at those Priority 1 and 2 and 3 issues, if those are systems that are going to fail, it will cost you more down the road than it would cost to fix them now.
Mrs. Scotty.
I just want to speak up for Sub-District 4, because there's a little historical perspective here. And if I don't get it in there, those guys over there know, I'll probably get a text message. Pine Wood. So I just want to bring up Pine Wood. We intentionally left Pine Wood off the list in the first phase for closing the classroom walls. However, we did talk about whether the physical location of Pine Wood was in the right place, and whether or not there should be some thoughts to that. So I just want to make sure that that gets back into the hopper as we go through this, and, and really ask the district to take a look at, is Pine Wood in the right physical place? And that was one of the reasons why I think we left it off, because we were really trying to figure out exactly where we were at. We haven't had a new elementary school west of 72nd to Saddle Brook, and north of Fort, built, maybe ever, but in that area. And it's tended to slow down some growth in that area. So I think we just need to think about whether, make sure that gets back on the list, no matter what the answer is.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. The first one actually goes back to the 2014 Phase 1 bond. And it's probably going to be potentially a Connie question. But I know we've had, we've had several people say that because of the bond premiums that we received on the sale of bonds, that we could possibly move additional projects into the bond. But I've also had people say, we cannot go over the total 421 million that was approved, and therefore, those bond premiums would just reduce our third tranche of bonds. So is there a clarification that we can get, so that everyone is on the same page for that?
So the, the, the reality is, the second piece you mentioned, where you would, your third tranche would be able to be adjusted to ensure that between premium and bond proceeds, so whoever wins the bid, however they make up their value or their amount, your total net gain or your total net value is going to be $421 million. So the, the premium that's been received to date is just being utilized as proceeds. There really is no premium. The third tranche will be sold short, if you will. Working with Bruce Lefler and his team, there's a way during the actual sale of the bond to ensure that it's 421 right on the nose. It's not, well, let's figure it out later. And the, the opportunity for the district to do more with the 4-2014 bond program proceeds would be, if there's savings under 421, let's say you spend $420 million, the district would come to the board with a recommendation of, we have $1 million, let's take care of these Priority 1 and these other components. But we're, we're working towards, again, that 421. There is no additional dollars outside of that.
Okay. And then second question. I tried to find this earlier today and couldn't. But I recall when we were going through the Phase 1 and determining, you know, what, what could be split off, what did we need to look at for Phase 2 high school, that we had something showing not just the students in the home attendance area, but that actually broke down how many students were in the pipeline for the different high school areas. So like, based on our current and predicted enrollment, when you got to this year, you might have an estimate for how many students would be living in that area.
Yeah, we've got, I've got graphs that are similar to the ones that are broken out by North, South, and West for every school. But that would have made this binder that much bigger, you know, 84 more sheets. So those are, we have those, and we can, we can provide the ones that we want, if it's just high school.
I would like to see them again. I don't know if other people would, but I think that was what kind of spurred up the, oh, you know, we, it's not building to hopefully bring kids into the district, it's building for kids that we already have literally in our schools that are coming down the pipeline to go into those new high schools, or we're not going to have seats for them.
Yeah. And that was the attempt to break the district out, kind of into those Northwest and Burke area, and Bryan and South area, to kind of show, in that area, here's what the growth looks like, or here's what the, you know, total population has done over the past seven years. And then you have the growth in those, those charts as well. So it's not by specific high school, but for the areas.
By areas of town. Okay.
Yeah. Well, we can get the high schools as well.
Okay. Mrs. Scotty.
Well, is, tell me on, in Tab 6, then, what those first three sheets are. Is that, am I misunderstanding?
Yeah. It's basically what's being requested, but combined, you know, the, the first one is literally the entire district, and then the second one, North, is if you were to take the Benson Central and North attendance areas, put them together, here's a number of K5, 6, 8, 9, 12 students that are in that area of the past seven years, and then the projected number of students over the next seven years. So, you know, to your point, for, for South, it doesn't break out how many of the, you know, if you follow that blue line, and you get to, you get to six, or 5,000, or 400, excuse me, 4,600 students roughly, it doesn't split them by Bryan and South, but in that whole attendance area, you'd be at 4,600 students in the area. And the same thing for, for the West or the other, for the North as well.
Is that making an assumption that the students who are currently in the district stay within the district? Does it bring back any students, recognizing we'd have more capacity? It's just current students staying in the pipeline, out?
Yeah. Basically, it's a modified cohort survival method. So you, you take the students that you have, you develop some rates at which they remain from one grade level to the next. You know, a lot of different factors that are pushing kids into the, into the district or out of the district at specific grade levels. You use those, those methods, or those, those cohort survival ratios, as well as housing and other things, to try and predict, you know, your population in, in this case, seven years. So, you know, the ninth through 12th grade students in seven years, I think I look at it today, you go all the way back to seven years ago, and they were, you know, kindergarten through third grade or something like that. So. But yeah, it does not try to predict changes in, in the way people make choice. There's just too much involved in trying to, you know, a lot of things can happen when you try to project enrollments or population in general, most of which we don't have control over. So it's, we try and take everything we, we know about the past, and then use that to try and predict the future.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you so much. I guess from my perspective, you all put together a tremendous, I know Casey's maps, and I love them, and, and all of his data, and I always feel comfortable with it. And you all went back and gave us good historical perspective, so. And I'm always confident in the staff's ability to be able to produce the work that, that we need to have done. So I just want to thank you all for the diligence in putting this together. It was very well done.
Yes. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure, from a, kind of a collection, from a board perspective, what, what next steps, or maybe Mr. Evans or Dr. Turnquist, just want to make sure that we're continuing to provide information, or, again, as a collection, we talked about early polling, and there's, there's other things, again, timeline, semi-independent, that can or should be done to put the district in the best position moving forward, but need some of that dialogue here, I think. Is that fair?
I think we shared a lot of information tonight, and my presumption is that the board's going to have some additional questions after tonight's meeting. I'd like to see those questions and work with staff in regards to board, board thoughts and comments, but eventually, it has to come back to the board table. Workshops, we can't take any action on anyway. It's just for information sharing. So I'd like some feedback from the board, based on what you heard tonight. I'll work with staff, we'll come up with potential proposals. I do know there are community members that have reached out to me that want to serve on steering committees, and I've kind of held everybody at bay, waiting for direction from the school board. But I'm hopeful that after tonight, it's given you some food, food for thought, and that you'll share your perspectives in emails and questions. And then we'll come back to the board officers with some thoughts for an actual board agenda item. That's, that's what I see from where we are tonight.
I think that is exactly in line with what I was going to say. First off, thank you all for preparing all this. I think it is a huge amount of information. And as we're going through it, I'd say if, as you do come up with questions, or have items you'd like additional information on, or just general feedback, I think if we can route that through Mr. Ray, and then you can get that out to the appropriate people.
Do we have a timeframe that we're working toward and working against? I mean, do we want to get stuff tomat within the next two weeks, or what's our timeframe?
I think...
Two days, I'm good as two days.
Whatever, whatever the direction of the district is.
Well, we have to go back to the, that if we retain the 2017, so when's the next, I would say, when's the next board officer meeting? The 13th? So I would say...
However, we also have several other things we are asking board members to do between now and the 13th. If you check your emails tonight, you'll see that. So I would say, is, do we have a meeting the week after that?
We can, sure. I mean, yes. We can do whatever you'd like to do.
So that would be the 20th?
Mm-hmm.
So if we set a goal to have questions and information to Mr. Ray by the 20th, I think that also gives time for our board members who aren't here to get their binders and be able to go through it as well.
Sounds good.
I just had one more thing to add that I didn't mention earlier. If we should happen to get students that come back to the district that had opted out or whatever, under the state aid formula, we'd get about 8,200 per student that would come back. So, and that does change from year to year, so depending when the school opens and if, if students come back. But that's something to consider as well.
Okay. With that, then our workshop will adjourn at 7:49 PM. Thank you.